It's AM and I will call this regular school board meeting to order for the public school district on Tuesday, January seventeenth at seven oh six AM. Uh both here in the conference room and via Zoom. Let's stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Let's go out with again. Okay, so uh let's move on to the uh confirmation and approval of the agenda. The agenda was in your packet and Mrs. Sell emailed out. Yesterday late afternoon that we would like to add under old business and item five. Science floor and windows bids. Call for bids and also under new business. And item five relating to house bill twelve fifty-one. With those additions, are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve that amended agenda?
I would make that motion Sheila.
Sheila moves to approve is very second. Veronica seconds. Any discussion? Any further changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and the agenda is approved. Uh just like to remind all board members uh to speak up and speak clearly when you are speaking uh for the benefit of those in the room as well as on Zoom. And I was going to ask others to come to the podium with the pony and listeners. So there it is. Uh we'll move it if we can. But the camera is very wide uh range today, so maybe speaking from the seats is will work. Alright. Welcome all visitors, both uh looks like we have all staff members here in the room as well as on Zoom. Board members Heimbuck and Nagel joining. Via Zoom as well as a couple of staff members and duly with the Department of Transportation. With that, let's move on to the consent agenda. Those items were in your packet um. Uh the approval of the. December thirteenth regular board meeting minutes where we were all by Zoom. And review of bills which were in the packet as well as an additional. That gives the credit card credit cards, credit card gap rate and that were reconciliation invoice listing that went out yesterday afternoon. And um also. The uh communications which can fit of. Let's show.
Yes, and then I also have a thank you from um Denise Allunders family for father personally, and we bought a book in memory of her father. They'll treat the book that they appropriate from their family, so.
Um.
Married that. Yes, okay, um so we received a tip, a shout out and it reads, on behalf of the staff and faculty at OPS. This shout out is for girls basketball coach Judy Hanson. She encouraged all of her players to invite an OPS staff member to the game Monday, January sixteenth. Now it's changed to Thursday. Uh it is an honor to receive personal invitations to attend a game for students whom we love dearly and try to pour into as much as we can. It truly means the world. I'm sure their girls can't even grasp how much a simple imitation means. So thank you. Thank you for encouraging them to do so and for reminding all of us why we do what we do. And I sent it to Judy and um I wanted to see her in person last night, but obviously it will be so thirsty, but. So she was pretty tickled.
Very nice. Alright, so with that, again, uh the minutes, the bill and the acknowledgement of the patients, is there a motion to approve? Or if there were any questions on the bills, I trust that you reached out to Hannah or Shannon yesterday. Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Or wants to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Heimbuck seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next we'll move on to our regular meeting agenda items, which in we'll start with reports and that will be the superintendent's reports.
Hey, one of the first things that I wanted to highlight was um the hiring of Lori Hayden. She was a social worker that originally worked for Nexus, but um her contract um was non-renewed. For numbers of kids and um so Allen Dell called me and offered us the opportunity to partner with them. Uh with to hire Lori. She lives in Allen Dell and we, you know, kind of worked together and negotiated with Lori and. We hired her and her first day was last Wednesday and she was here Wednesday and Friday and she was gonna be here yesterday at the no school, so she'll be here. We have her Monday, Wednesday and every other Friday. Um so originally when last year when we were talking about doing remote or maybe that was two years ago, um remote counseling, you guys had said about that ten thousand dollar mark, that's what it'll end up costing us by the end of the year and then we'll just see how it goes. We use um. Uh some S R dollars for learning loss, so that we've got those monies in that, but we have to spend money for learning loss anyways, but I think it's been going really well. Um she's been working with Gray and Brandon and the counselors and. The thing about our services is they're not. For certain children, we can use her wherever we need to in whatever situations, as long as it kind of fits in her.
She has a very diverse background, a lot of. A lot of social work um work with behavior and stuff like that, so she's gonna be a great addition.
Just a point of question, Monica and Sheila, were you able to hear Greg when he spoke?
Yes, I can hear him.
Good, thank you. Okay, so her duties are working directly with students, uh behavior issues and. Anything else?
Um she did, she can do quite a bit of stuff. She won't be able to do mental health counseling. Um the therapy piece of it that we're looking for, but you know, there's a lot of needs that we have, those things that we've been looking for and especially in the elementary with some of the behaviors. That are beyond what we can do just because of the number of people.
Okay, so taking up some burden of that times teachers in Paris.
They're not in there yet.
Okay, great.
I think it was is a very good investment of our money and I mean, she's seems to be very. She's very friendly, easy to get along with, and she seemed like the first day she just came in and started digging her.
Those who didn't know what she needed to do. And what is Nexus that she used to work for?
So it's um uh out of. Out of Aberdeen, it is a medical, I don't know if it's a corporation or a hospital or, but they send out. Actually Nexus still sends people out to Edgley and Allen Dell, they share counselor, um on mental health counselor, but um. Laurie's was more of a social work, but they they have the people and then they contract out. So she's not a hired as an employee of those, we're just contracting for services.
With her directly and not through.
With her. Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, um and then this afternoon I have a, I haven't given up on the mental health counseling piece of it. I mean, with Bob, we didn't with Sam for to see where we're at, kind of pick up. Where I think the kind of the. Communication was with Craig. And then I I'm still gonna be working with him to see, you know, if there's anything else that we can do on that side of it, the mental health piece of it. Um, let's see, some, I don't know, I sent that stuff to you about the open enroll um students toward districts. There's twenty-nine open enrolled students toward district and two that are out of state non-tuition. So starting with this school year. There's no funding for um. Travel to the, you know, we get mileage, we also, we get mileage reimbursement, a dollar eleven a mile, that's what it is right now, and then we also get student transportation money. So when you go to pick up those children, you get money for each of the children. We still get that amount of money. We get the, you know, the pickup fee for the kids or whatever they call it. And then, but we do not get mileage anymore and we have some children that we go outside of our district a significant number of miles. They might not be out of our boundary that far. But when you have to travel, you have to go on highways. So there's, we have quite a bit of travel and we're not getting reimbursed for those miles. Starting this year, but because we already had that in place, felt like it wasn't fair to pull that out from underneath those families because we already had it, but I think as we move forward. Um we might want to be thinking about it and actually. Picking up those families against our policy of a, 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 but I think it's boring us decided, you know. Whenever those families looked in that we were gonna pick them up, but we're also getting funding for their method crime, so there has been change in that. So I just kind of wanted to maybe give you that something to ponder and I'll get some more information, you know, we'll put together like how many miles there. That we're not getting reimbursed for and and just let you know that piece. We have a a map and I'll work with Dave and we'll figure it out. One of the reasons why I started to look at this too is that we don't have enough bus drivers and we're gonna lose another bus driver at the end of the year, so. Uh we may have to consolidate a route and in order to go as far out as we do, our buses are getting in at like five in the evening, most of them aren't, if they go. Point it ways out, you know, to go through those homes, so. We're gonna have some decisions to make or talk about, so.
Leave that there now, now?
Sure, okay, um. Just wanted to say thank you and school board appreciation month and I I wrote that in there, but thank you for all that you do because. I. Pretty busy people and you're giving your time to us, so thank you very much for that. I think that's all I had on mind. If you have questions for um other. Other um department heads, just let me know or Mr. Novas is here. Dave was gonna be here, but I'm betting busy with the buses, so. What's that? Yeah.
Seems like I highlighted a couple of things in one of the reports. They write out three or four?
Uh yeah, I have them, I have mine reported and my attachments and then their.
If. I guess I didn't. Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Sell? Or any questions related to? The other uh reports that were included?
Anna, just one thing back on the transportation.
Sure.
Those two um South Dakota students, they transport them up to one of our regular stops, don't do they not?
Yes, they do. They transport um up to our last stop on that route. Um and, you know, yeah, they're they they do that for us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And it is not illegal for us to transport these students. We're simply not going to be reimbursed.
Right, yeah.
Alright, um let's. Move, uh let's take action to accept those, the administrative reports from the superintendents. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
I'll make that motion, Heimbuck.
Uh Heimbuck moves to accept this superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Nagel second.
Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Let's move on to item two. We've added a business manager report because. Uh so yeah, I just uh over Christmas break or. One of our many snow days, I was able to finally get all the S R two funding requested. I got all the S R three. Funding requested and it that came in at five hundred and five thousand dollars or. Uh five hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and one cent. So we are, that has been approved from um DPI and we're just waiting for the check. We have approximately, um we just submitted, uh we have a claim in for learning loss right now, but if 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 that one is approved, as it it stands, there will be still approximately sixty thousand dollars. In learning loss left to claim by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um I was able to get titled by funding. We've, I've submitted that application. They were closed yesterday, they were. They weren't open yesterday because of the Martin Luther King holiday, so we don't know where the status of that is. Um. I finally got the budget entered on another one of our great snow days. I went to the election seminar that was held in January. Uh it was just last week in Fargo and then um the kind of little repeat, we're going to the negotiation seminar in February. Um starting yesterday, um the next part of the business manager certification program was an online class. There's two of them this. Oh, I wouldn't call it a semester, but this. Season, there's more starting, I think, in June. Um I got the financials finished up through September, October, November, and I was pushing for December, but I wanted to get the W twos out and the payroll with. That was kind of, I'm just thought that needed to be done. Um and I've been taking in the several webinars from the Pers, from T F F Bar. I think I have three more scheduled this week. And I was in contact with the auditor and he thinks he 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 might have been able to sneak in today, but he didn't think he was quite going to be ready, so he has. Um he said he will be ready by the February. Um council meeting. I set up a benevity. We were requested by a. An individual that they wanted to donate money um through their company. Um they're, I believe they're a Microsoft employee. And if they donate hours through this benevity company, they will give us. Um certain dollars. So I reached out and didn't really, I had never heard of it and I reached out to some of the other business managers and they said, oh yeah, it's easy to set up and it was with that a couple of buttons and and I gave them our. Um our goals and. I don't have anything yet, but it's out there if anybody wants to donate through Oaks High School. Um other than that, say. I don't have any, you know. Refresh my memory, the audit that Juleson is working on is for. What period? Twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So it'll be through June thirtieth of twenty-one. Okay, and it's only a one-year audit? No, this is, this is two years, so it's July one of nineteen. Okay. Yep. So we'll really need to be starting to work on our next audit pretty soon.
Right.
For you, that will go from twenty. Two through twenty, no, twenty. July one of twenty-one to June thirtieth of. This coming twenty-three. Yep, yep. Okay, so when do we? Do we, we just put out bids for that and only for Stella would bid and she would always do it, but now she doesn't do it anymore, so. I don't know if we need to put out bids there. Isn't the bid process. I don't have to check on that.
I mean, we bid this one. That's how we ended up with.
Yeah, we had, we started out with um. Carol.
Yeah.
And the, and he didn't even start on it before. That became a problem and you just. And there aren't that many out there that.
But the bids were substantially different. We did it as what I think we should bid it again, so.
How much is this one? Give that bill. It's not, it's not right here.
Okay, totally. I don't remember.
Do some. Explore it on that because we'll be needing to get, I I don't know when that process has to begin. I suppose half the direction on thirty, but. If this is, if we're satisfied, there aren't really a lot of choices out there, but we should, we should see. Just just to make sure we're. Doing our due diligence. Anything else for Shannon? If not, is there a motion to accept the business manager's report? I'll make a motion. Uh Dave moves to accept the business manager's report. Is there a second? Or seconds? Any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um just an update on the B legendary grant.
Yeah, so we have set it for Friday the third and Saturday the fourth and it's an all-day thing on both of those, I'm sorry, uh March.
I thought that turned out. I thought they didn't like that because it was during basketball season?
Um no, they're gonna. That's what they're gonna plan on is a March third and March fourth. If we make it to girls state, I told them that we would need to change it.
Okay.
So um Brittany and they were, they were understanding of that. I I have reserved growing small towns for both days. I don't even remember what the cost was at, but um she will have food. She'll take care of the food, I have coffee, things like that, and Brittany said her board. Kind of had talked to her about splitting one day here, one day there, but I told her, you know, we have growing small towns, we've, I've got it ready and reserved. I'm sure my board can be flexible, because I I get it, right? You know, why, why do we have to confuse you both? And but she said they don't really have a space like that over there except at their school, right? She said, I know that that's a very nice place. She knows about it, so um. I think that the place is kind of up in the air, but right now we do have those eight set with um. With the P legendary ladies. And I think they prefer that it's in one place that he said they could be flexible also, so and we've got the lodging here um. So that's kind of where it's at, but um Brittany knows where we're at. We just had a conversation about it the other day, so, but it is all day Friday and all day Saturday. And we're gonna have, okay, the school board members, the principals, the superintendent and the business manager from all schools at the high school.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so. Let's take a peek at the September, October and November financial reports. Now that was. All in the packet, right? You you've got some supporting materials here, but is are these items we need to take action on the pledge report and building?
The pledge, the pledge report, yes.
Okay. So the building fund is just a point of information.
Cause I think that's. That's part of the, just the building fund, is that just part of the discussion? Um yes.
So. Take it away, Shannon. Alright, so I Sheila and Monica, I believe that Greg has emailed you quick uh the pledge reports for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Just right before the meeting started. Um so this is just every six month, every six months, we uh show that the uh free banking institutions have. Pledged enough money and we are covered um through the N C U A or the F D I C. Um so if. We are pledged, we are very well pledged, um. We're very covered by.
So the institutions have the.
Yes. Yes. So we just need a motion to accept the pledge report for this. Okay, so uh and that's. Uh as a part of the financial re, that that should be a separate.
That one should be a separate, yep.
Uh so I would entertain a motion to approve the pledge report for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion, Sheila.
Sheila Nagel moves to approve the December thirty-first, twenty-two pledge report. Is there a second?
Heimbuck second.
Heimbuck seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Um now the financial reports for September, October, November. Were in the packet, nothing additional, the bills we already took care of. Everyone should have had an opportunity to review the uh reports in the packets.
Uh the other, the thing that I noticed was our insurance. Um percentages were quite a bit higher than the budget, so I don't know if that is an updated number of this, we'll have to. Keep an eye on or not, it's already, looks like it's a one-time payment, but just to know that it was substantially higher.
It's specifically property insurance?
Uh property insurance is, was almost fifty percent higher and then. The health to me looks like you do, just put it out in my head. Um I don't know where it started, if it started which month, but it looks like it might be coming in.
Shannon will have some time to. Dig a little deeper. When you say the health insurance, are you looking at a specific?
It just looked to me like on most all the staff, the percentage used, if this budget goes through June, when. It's gonna be well over a hundred percent by that.
Any other questions or observations? Anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve the September, October and November financial reports?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Or wants to approve, is there a second? Dave second. Is there any discussion? Any additional questions? Or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes and thank you Shannon for your continued trudging through this and sounds like you're feeling a little more confident and. Some things come up, so thank you. Next we'll move on to school policy. First and second, first, fourth, or possibly first and second reading of G A A E. I'll let Mrs. Sell give us the background on this, which she did very nicely in her. Uh superintendent, uh the, her agenda summary.
So this is required. Um we could go through a first and a second reading or it's required. There's not many. Um things that we have to pick and choose. I highlighted, I went back another policy, so you can, I chose the ones that were correct, so if there's a a request from somebody in the community for something with curriculum wise, they have to go to the principal, the principal. Um fills out the request that comes to me, you know, then it goes to, so I went through and I chose the correct ones there, so that's aligned with the other policy, but we don't have a choice on this. Um we have to have it, so that's why I put it to you guys. If you wanna just do first and second reading, you can do that absolutely, or if you just wanna do a first reading, sit on it and do the second reading, but there's nothing that we can change on it, so.
My question was, I mean, was this gonna affect anything that we are teaching or not teaching as far as.
No. No, I, you know, if if you look at the century code, you just have to have, it's got a a policy so that if somebody does want to um. Challenge something that we're teaching, then they, it's right there for the critical race theory. It it, you know, it's not saying that we can't or if it. That it it's just gives power to people in, you know, the stakeholders to challenge it, so.
Okay, so um we have, we have before us of. Our first look at, or we had it in our packet, uh our first look at. Policy G A A E relating to critical race theory, uh because it is a required policy. It was uh it is. Offered to us by the School Boards Association because it's required and it's in response to action by the last legislative session. Um and. We 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 could choose to do a first reading today or. We can say. We have to have it, it's in good form, we can wait second reading, so. Uh is there a motion with regard to acceptance of? Of this policy as a first reading or as uh waiting a second?
I'll make the motion to move to adopt policy G A A E on first reading as written and that it be presented for adoption at the next regular board meeting.
Okay, so a first reading and it be presented, Nagel moves to adopt G A A E as written as a first reading and be presented for adoption at their next regular board meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Heimbuck seconds.
Heimbuck seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, may please call the roll. Start.
Yes.
Dave? Yes. Heimbuck?
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes. The motion passes five to zero and the first reading is approved. Uh as an accompaniment to that, uh we need to amend a board regulation. Um. Which be done before we do a second reading and final approval of this.
Right, it's only, you only have to do one reading um of a board regulation. Right, it's only, you only have to do one reading um of board regulation. Uh, and we have to have this in order for our copy. But um I have given you the required changes so you can see the old one. And then also, I just gave you the cleaned up version just with the highlights. You can see what it's going to look like. Again, those are, those are required changes if you're going to have this board regulation, which we already do have the board regulations. So it's amended.
So the only, there, there are some sort of little cleanup housekeeping changes and then uh under review procedure, item four, letter E. That is what relates to the critical race theory legislation, which is required anyway. And then in all likelihood, we'll adopt at our next meeting, but a first reading gives the public an opportunity to give us feedback if they wish. Okay, um and but we, because this is a board regulation, we do need to take action on it as opposed to an administrative.
Yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Sal gave us in her agenda summary um the language uh of a proposed motion to approve this regulation. Well, if nobody else will, I'll take the opportunity to move to amend the board regulation G A A C dash B R as presented and to make it the official board regulation of the district. Is there a second?
Nagel, second.
Nagel seconds the motion. Uh, is there any discussion? I would just note that it adds a teacher, no, it was, there was a teacher oh, from each educational level and replaces it with just a teacher. And it, but it does, oh, but uh um, you know, for those that obviously don't have this in front of them, it's the procedure for reviewing complaints about any instructional resource material, which I don't recall that we had to do that, but it does form uh a committee and we need, we're supposed to have formed a committee at the beginning of each school year, so we should probably take care of that. But it doesn't include a parent. It does. All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm Buck.
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes, motion passes five to zero, the regulation is approved. Um, old business. Second reading of the twenty three, twenty four calendar, which is in our packets.
There are just two edits that were caught. So the it where it says twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four calendar in the middle there in the orange bar, that was the wrong year. I changed that. And then in May, it said May of twenty three and I changed it to May of twenty four, but those were the only changes that were presented.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the twenty three, twenty four school calendar?
I'll make that motion, Heimbug.
Heimbug moves, is there a second? Second, Dave seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
I agree.
Aye. Anyone opposed say no. Motion passes, the twenty three, twenty four school calendar is approved. The next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty two, twenty three calendar changes. Would you walk us through that, please?
Okay, so I have changed and I added the storm days that we've used so far. Um, and then I changed the makeup days um to April eleventh and February twentieth, so that is correct. And then I um taken out our days off of President's Day and then uh Easter Tuesday, I took those off. So those are now school days. So this should be ready to, you know, put out to the public. Um, one thing, the reason why I changed the makeup days because we had it as April tenth, I really want to preserve April tenth for our staff because we have talked to our teachers and if they completed fourteen hours of PD on their own outside of the already required thirteen hours, we were going to do an exchange that we can have April eleventh as an exchange day. Those that don't finish them by that time will be here doing PD. Um, but I want to preserve April tenth, so we can still, we're going to do that and I want to make sure that we do that. So we'll figure um something else, but I want, that's why I changed April eleven, the makeup day instead of April tenth as originally that on there. So.
All right, is there a motion to approve the changes in the twenty two, twenty three calendar? Motion. Uh, Dave moves to approve the twenty two, twenty three calendar changes. Is there a second?
I'm Buck second.
Thor seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed say no. Motion passes. Next item is the bus bids, which were received and opened last month.
Yes, um, so we received two bus bids. Um, this was the lower of the two bus bids and Shannon worked diligently with Dave to get all the specs, but basically it's the same bus that is on its way or supposed to be here by the end of school year for us to have. Um, it's the same bus. It it'll be a route bus separately. There's no air conditioning in this one, but I think the new one coming has air conditioning. There was a difference in there. I I don't remember that. Um, so this was the bid that came in and um this is the bus that Dave is recommending that we we purchase. After we purchase this bus, then all of our buses will be in the two thousands.
This millennium.
Uh, and the bus that we will be trading in, um, Robert and I were having this conversation, um, that that bus, Dave said if he tried to sell it now, he wouldn't even get five hundred dollars, but we got BW grant, if you remember, right? The BW grant was for forty one thousand at the time at the, you know, the bus was. Um, and this will not be on this year's budget because the delivery will not be until next school year. So we've already got the bus coming this year in the budget, but Shannon and I will make sure if you approve this and we accept this bus, that this will be on the budget.
For the benefit of those that don't have this in front of, base bid is a hundred and twenty three thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars. What's the total with all of it?
So that was my question I dropped out earlier is are those just the list or that's all we?
That we, we could get those options, but
okay.
No, we would.
Okay, so we're, we're approving the base bid. Okay, and options might, the, the most expensive option is to add seat belts at six thousand dollars.
Right, and they did offer um AC on it, but it was like eight thousand dollars. I was unfortunately, because of the weather, Dave isn't here, so um he would know more of the things, but we, we passed on some of those just to get it down because it just was so much more than just like everything else.
And so just thinking back in my earlier years on the board, maybe seventy eight to eighty three thousand was, was a bus. Which this shouldn't surprise anybody, right? But everything is up, so we will be bringing our fleet to the line.
Yeah, it.
Uh, and I, just some, some information from other districts. I, I think many districts have much, much newer fleets. We tend to our history, I think, is that we buy buses and we just want them for a long time. And how can you go wrong getting forty grand for a five hundred dollar bus? I mean, it, it it's, I think it's been, we've been responsible with our
Well, and that's what Dave felt too, was this was our chance to get, even when we did the clean air after we did those, it wasn't as much money as the BW rack. It was as many for that bus. All right, he still uses that old bus, but.
So this one comes and he can, he still can.
Yeah.
But after that, it has to be destroyed.
Right, right.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the purchase of this um quote from Interstate Truck Center for a bus for delivery in the twenty three, twenty four school year?
Yeah.
Uh, for a bid of one hundred twenty three thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars.
Heimbug makes that motion.
Heimbug moves the approval of the bus bid. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Thor, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion or concerns about this bid, the, the price, the features? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call and roll.
Thor?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes. I'm Buck.
Yes.
Nagel?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes, motion passes five to zero, the bus bid is approved. Um, it is, what? Nagel's still with us for a bit. Um, music awards display cabinet, although it was a nice summary in our pocket.
Yeah.
That. Or oh, and you're not asking for any uh, any action on this?
No.
Okay, because you found some money in a dedicated fund that seems appropriate. So, okay, so for the public and those that don't have the packet, uh last summer, the, some volunteers offered to sell the old, no longer used band uniforms to uh use some of those, use all of the, the funds generated towards this uh music display case project. But of course, the costs exceeded uh those funds. Friends of Fine Arts will donate five hundred dollars. Active Arts is considering the donation of five hundred and the volunteers will donate a combined total of a thousand and uh Mrs. Sal and Shannon found uh found a dedicated fund with some uh dollars that could be allocated in a thousand, yeah, thousand dollars. So pictures were sent out. Did all the board get pictures from the, the display cases? Or maybe we could go up and look at.
Sure. And if not, I just send pictures.
Okay. I'd like to walk. All right, so thank you volunteers for that excellent project and your time and donations and um we'll then move on to the science floor and window bids.
Oh, I'm, I think we're at uh, the steps, but like, I know, oh, I'm sorry.
Usually be that this.
I don't know. Um, so I talked yesterday to Ryan Sigurud and um they are ready to bid out the um science floor and the windows and I mean, could wait till next month, but they, he really wants to make this roll in. So he will get it into the newspaper on January twenty sixth and February second. And um, we just need your approval to put it out on, on the bid. Um, I included in, or I, I printed them out, but I also have them included in the packet uh, or sent out to you yesterday, I'm sorry. The drawings of the windows. So the windows that won't be replaced are on the science floor, on third floor, because those are new ones. And then on the band, the band and music room, those are double painted. So those ones are the only windows that won't be replaced if you decide to go with the windows also. But basically what we're doing now is putting out the bids, the base is the science floor stabilization and the windows, each side is just um, I wanted to, what's that word? I'm starting all this stuff. Uh, they're, they're the extras, the um, the alternates. So then you have the option of, so we know we have to do the science report. That has to be done. And they're guessing that the cost of that is going to be about three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. That's what they're guessing with how much construction is coming in at, that's their estimate. Um, and then we would have the option, as those bids come in, to take the alternates. Like we can say, okay, we're going to take alternate. We're going to take the west elevation, which you can see um that alternate is number five. So that would be all of the windows on this side. So I, I'm assuming that's going to be more expensive, the west side. It's going to be then the um south and north side.
And are we only asking to replace or bids to replace the windows that are there or all of the windows, even in those that are currently not windows?
Okay, that, that's a really good question because um, so the ones that are not windows, you know, that are just the aluminum headed that they will be replacing those to look like windows. So maybe when you leave or whatever, if you look at the science windows that are up there, up on the top, it looks like those are windows, but they're not. So the, I, the science, those up on the top, can you see that? You probably don't have that picture on there. On the top of the science windows, those are not really windows. They look like windows, but they're not. But aesthetically, it looks like our building, like historically, what our building should have looked like or what our building did look like. So this is, um, they go in there and this will be all, I, I think it's all re insulated, but then they will do, it looks like glass, you know, you don't know that that's not what it is, but it, it looks better than what it is. So um, that's what they're suggesting that we do. And if you look on the plans from the architect, it shows how they're going to go in vertically and they will replace those. That's on page, it's on, almost the last page or it is on the last page. Ryan was trying to explain it to me, but it's like very basic. Well, we're only calling, we are only calling for bids, yep, for those. Um, and again, the base bid is science room floor because we know we have to have that done. And then the alternates are each side of the building for the windows. And then you can decide, yes, we'll take alternate one or we'll take alternate two, or we'll take all of the alternates. But it was, where our eventual goal is for it to look like what's on the um, on that picture back there. What it was historically with the, the school, but even though those ones in the middle are not necessarily windows, it will look like they are windows.
From the outside, but not from the inside.
Right.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the call for bids for the science floor stabilization and the alternates on the windows replacement?
So move, Heimbug.
Heimbug moves to approve the call for bids for the science floor stabilization project and the alternate of additional alternate bids for windows. Is there a second? Second, Dave seconds. Is there any discussion? And we would expect the bids to be available by when, or when will they be? By Thursday, February sixteenth. So certainly not, not, I don't think that, that's not before.
No.
So it would be something to be taken up at our March meeting unless we, unless there's a need to do it sooner.
And I'll get, or I'll contact Monica and Robert on the facilities, because there's some other things that Ryan wants us to look at, like replacement of the side on the windows, you know, on the, on the frame. There are certain things that they have questions on, but I really kind of wanted to silly, because you guys were there, or Robert was there through the whole window, you know, when you first started it. So.
Any further questions or discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
I'm Buck.
Yes.
Nagel?
Dave?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Neil? Yes, motion passes five to zero. All right, so I have seven fifty four and um Sheila was going to leave home around eight o'clock. And will you be joining us when you get here if we're still meeting?
Well, yeah, if you're still meeting, I guess I can.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is E staff spotlight.
Hey. Pretty well today. It's great. Okay, so we are the newly Habits of Mind community, um of myself, Kaylin Happy, Sarah Steyer, Kathy Warren, and Christine Bo. Um, and as you can see in your handout, you have the portrait of a graduate that was made a couple of years ago um that we have had in our system for two, three years, something like that. And on the other side, you will have um the sixteen habits of mind. Um, and this winter, Kaylin and I led a book study called Students at the Center, personalized learning with the habits of mind. So if you just glance at some of these habits of mind, um, that's kind of what our book was about and So if you just glance at some of these habits of mind, um, that's kind of what our book was about, and how they integrate those habits into personalized learning. Um, and so a lot of our teachers, I think there was like fifteen teachers that took place, or took uh, parts in this book study. And, um, we really just were looking at these habits and soft skills that students need in order to see success in personalized learning. And we were having all of these discussions on the wording of these habits and how, you know, friendly the vocabulary was for even K-12, or a whole school, why maybe initiative to use. So, um, we wanted to see how it was correlated with something that we already created with our Portrait of Brad. And so we formed this committee to see if we could put those two together. And, um, Christine's going to kind of talk to a little bit why we think that these habits are important with our Portrait of Brad. As I mentioned, you have the two together. And you have staff came together and be here quite often. Let's not do something new. Let's do better with what we have. And so that's where the Portrait of a Graduate is really our main thing. We want to do more with that. Currently in the high school, we're using it to post student of the month and characteristics out for that person. We're not really encompassing what it could be as a whole. And so this group came together and said, we're going to synthesize the habits of mind with the Portrait of a Graduate, because they're really those soft skills that we want all of our kids and our staff, all of our people that we work with, to have these habits, and we're on these habits. And so we want to continue to work and find a way to use the habits of mind more so that terminology, that vocabulary through our elementary. And as they enter the junior high, high school, move that vocabulary into the Portrait of a Graduate. Because they, they really do match up well. We've worked to kind of pull each of the sixteen into what we currently have as our Portrait of a Graduate. And having those conversations with our staff, that this isn't one more new thing. It's not one extra. It, it's something we already have. We've put time and energy into, we need to get it into our classroom. Part of what we daily use with our kids and live and breathe these habits and these soft skills as we graduate students.
We talked about the, the purpose is really coming back to our students. We want them to have these skills. And right now, we're moving in personalized learning, and most of our students don't have these skills. And so personalized learning isn't being as effective as it could be, because our kids can't, in a sense, make these decisions, because they don't know all these things about themselves. And so, and we talked about how, like, as a staff, it unites us K-12 to do one thing together. Instead of, you know, K-six is doing one thing, and seven, twelve is doing something different. Somehow, we need to work together to, um, build these skills in our kids. It looks different, obviously, for kindergartners to be able to, um, manage their impulsivity than a seventh grader. But those skills, learning how to teach them to our kids, isn't just going to benefit them here, but outside of our school as well. So it really came back to, like the title of the book, our students are at the center. They need these skills in order to do things here at school and outside. So somehow, we needed to form something, um, to help teach us how to teach them how to do these things.
So that comes in, um, talking with Anna, and how do we make sure that everybody's on the same page, receives the same training, and all that. So Anna found EduPlanet twenty-one. It is a training hub where, um, we have its own, um, Habits of Mind Institute, um, that goes right along with all of this. Um, we learned how to really apply the sixteen habits into our lessons, into our units that we teach, how to assess them, looking at portfolios, um, gathering of that showing of growth of each of the habits. And within that, uh, learning habit, or learning hub, there is twenty-five hours approximately that each teacher will put into that learning. And it's important that we all receive the same learning. And so that was kind of the take of getting everybody on board, making sure everybody has that same training and the same understanding as we look forward. So we've used snow days, PD days to complete now six of the ten, um, pathways, as with their call. And then we are projected to be finished by the end, and so we are using PD day, and hopefully no more snow. And I'll pass it on to Kathy.
And now that we're well into our training, um, our next step is to get some feedback from our, from our staff. So our next plan is to meet with them, get some feedback on some things that we, um, are proposing. Uh, we are proposing that we have an elementary version, um, and a high school version, just, um, have, have the mesh, but yet use some friendlier terminology. We would like our end goal to be, um, some kind of a final project, a portfolio or a capstone project for our graduates. And then wondering if you guys have any questions? For us?
You said, uh, you mentioned cutting a little friendlier language for, um, the, for different age levels. And I'm looking at the one that says finding humor and referring to whimsical incongruous. So you did find a good, I mean, it's hard for me to look at one side and the other, but you did, you're seeing some good crosswalks between the habits of mind and our existing portraits that will sort of mesh together for an overall plan.
We did, and I met Kathy, Kathy went through each of the sixteen of the habits of mind and tucked them into what we already have on our Portrait of a Graduate. So we have a conversation on where do they best meet the Portrait of a Graduate? And some of them are in several different categories. So we need to decide where do we want to focus that? And there's work to be done yet, but that is something we have.
Two other things, the two other words I heard were, um, capstone projects and portfolio. Can you, can anyone expand on each of those?
Yeah.
And make your vision as, okay, they might.
Okay, so, um, I am a little bit further in the training, because I was asked to start first to see if this would be something to present to staff. So I was the guinea pig. Um, so I am finished with the ten. Um, but there is a section in there, obviously, on portfolios, and it talks about how to keep everything together in some kind of management system.
You're talking about students.
Yeah. So basically, it's them reflecting on a project and keeping everything on. This is the time when I was using persistence. And then that continues to grow. So when they get to that twelfth grade, they present something to staff, very similar to Northern Cast of the Cast.
We talked about, like, we created this Portrait of a Graduate. We spent a lot of time on it, and then we just put it in a dark closet. And like, we'd pull it out for another month, and we expect our kids to be able to do these things. But we don't ever, like, explicitly talk to them about when they're doing these things, or, you know, like, if they're doing a project in my room, and there's a kid, a kid that struggled, he restarted, like, I need to be more cognizant about being like, hey, you're really persistent, like, what did you learn while you were doing all of that? And how, helping them create something to show that they can do these things that we want our kids to be able to do. And then be able to show people, like, here's how I tied this to my learning, or even outside of my learning. These are the skills I learned, here's how I can do it. So it would just be something that, like, before they graduate, we have, like, this presentation day, and people can come in, and these kids can present how they exhibit these qualities that we decided were important for our kids.
And it might not be something they've done here at school, but it might be something community wants.
And, and there would be a sort of a digital platform on which they would keep their records. So it isn't something like all of a sudden, gosh, it's in April, and I'm just kidding, now I have to do this. It's, it's being.
Being real, I do go.
Yes. Good, I love that.
And so in that role.
So this was all driven by them. Yeah, we were looking for a PD thing, and I had gone to Tara, and we, you know, I found the habits of mind, but they have done this all on their own. That's the best thing about our school, because we weren't there pushing them, or they, they chose this, and they realized the importance of it, and they saw through their book study that it wasn't, something wasn't connecting, and they chose to do this on their own. This is all their volunteer hours, they're putting this in, they've been coming in early, staying late, working on it with no, I mean, we aren't requiring it. But that's the best thing about our school is, this is K-12, and they're doing this together, because they want to do the best they can.
And that's, like, going off of what Hannah said, I think the biggest thing is, like, K-12. It's an initiative that kindergartners will have, and that it will go throughout their journey at OPS. Like, they will know those habits of mind, and they will have that vocabulary. And that's our goal, is to have an initiative that's K-12 of all of our students. People. So that was our biggest thing, too, that we wanted to bridge.
Yeah, every time we met for a book study, all the discussion kept going back to, and we need to look at the habits of mind, because our kids don't know what these are. And that's why there's these learning problems in our classrooms, because they don't have these techniques or these skills, because we, we don't know how to teach them. And so we have to teach ourselves how to teach them, so that they can be better learners in, in our classroom.
Well, I'd like that we've been sharing out the staff spotlight, as it's been, you know, in a, a small, you know, a cut and edited form. Um, I think we should do that with your presentation, but we should also include these habits of mind, so that, that people can easily see what it is you're talking about in the portrait. So as a companion to that. Because I think all of us, well, both of us who are older, um, get, get more appreciative of some of these habits, like being persistent and listening better than, um, than maybe we were when we were six or fifteen. All right, any other questions, comments, thoughts? Monica, are you still with us? Good? Okay.
I'm here.
It's very early here. It's, it's six, we started this at six AM Mexico time, so.
Oh, I feel so bad. I feel so bad.
Don't feel bad for me.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to new business. I have a very, very exciting North Dakota DOT presentation with Beth Dooley. I see she's still there. She's muted, she's, uh, she doesn't, we can't see her, but maybe we will be able to. Hopefully.
Okay, ah, yes.
Can we, can we get a?
Um, I am going to. Ah, I'm so used to be working with teams.
Don't worry about it, just, oh, there she is.
Oh. Good morning, everyone. Um, I'm Beth Dooley with SEH Engineering out of Bismarck, and we are the consultant for a North Dakota DOT project. And that's going to be happening on Highway One. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Sometimes I never know, or the computer is going to pick up my, my such important words. So, um, this has to do with, uh, a mill and overlay on Highway One, which is just, uh, a resurfacing of Highway One. And in that process, what they're going to be doing is changing out the curb ramps, which is the area that of the sidewalk that slopes through the street. And currently, the ADA performance of that curb ramps are not in compliance. So they are going to change out those that are not in compliance. And I think most of it is just a slope issue and a little bit of a widening. There's, um, uh, I don't think any person that's not in, you know, changing out curb ramps would even notice what's going to actually happen, except for, uh, they do have to be in compliance with ADA. So that's the reasoning why they're going to, during this project, change those curbs out. Um, which leads me to the owners of the land, uh, which is your school. Um, so there is a, um, curb ramp agreements, which covers any, uh, construction next to your property, should someone, you know, damage that property, or should they step on it. Um, it's a temporary construction easement. And so it goes away after the project is completed. Um, this project is supposed to happen in the construction season of 2023. And, um, there has been some rumors, I have not heard it straight out, that they're going to push it back. But as of now, I just know that that's supposed to happen, uh, this coming construction season. So, um, what I'm asking of you is to, um, if you have any questions, certainly ask. I see that there's a fence that is very close to the south, uh, curb ramp. Um, so that one, though, I looked at all the designs, and I looked at the removals on the design, and it looks like that fence will stay there during the removals. It's not going to affect that, and it's not going to affect when that actually is, uh, the concrete is poured and the construction is redone. So that kind should not be in any way, um, affected by, by this construction project. Um, so they're going to be doing the one in the south on your block, and they're also going to be doing the one in the north of this block. Um, does anybody have any questions before I have anything that, um,
Does have any ties to stoplight deal?
Um, you know, I heard a lot about that, a lot about, oh, can we fix all the sidewalk? Um, you know, that, the lighting project, uh, at first, that they, they did include that into this project, and then they're like, whoa, this is way more than what the town is looking at. So, um, and it's all in the right of way. So that, I think, has been a whole separate issue, as far as I know, is that, that, the whole stoplight, blinking light, et cetera, et cetera, the signing, we call it, um, is not something that, um, I am dealing with. And, um, if there's going to be more coming with that, that's, I'm sure, going to be a discussion directly with the DOT and, and, uh, the town, the city itself, um, on that signing issue. Um, so, yeah, I have heard that. And, um, I, I personally do not have any dealings with that. So that's strictly with the DOT at this point.
Okay, any other questions related to this temporary construction easements? I think we're not, we're really not even asking the board for action.
Um, yes, actually, there is. Yes, I just need a motion to accept the, um, North Dakota DOT curb ramp agreements. And there's also a $300 compensation, should you choose to take it. Um, and then you can also indicate whether you want to accept that compensation or not.
All right, so are there any questions related to this easement? They are asking for action. Uh, we can continue to discuss once we get in motion. Is there a motion to approve the, um, temporary construction easement for two curb ramps and to accept the proposed compensation of $300? I'll make a motion. Dave makes that motion. Is there a second?
Heinberg, seconds.
Heinberg, seconds. Is there any discussion or further questions from Miss Dooley?
My discussion would be, I understand that it's two separate entities that we're dealing with, a private contractor for the DOT, but or we grant the easement. Personally, I think we should wait at least a little bit and see what happens with this bill that's currently at the DOT now regarding the stoplight.
On the, on the easements, um, so you're, can you, can you repeat that again? Because I can't quite hear it.
Well, just because I understand that you have no control over the stoplight, but the stoplights are DOT project, this is a DOT project. There's a bill coming up this week in the Senate that we're, our local legislators are hoping to remedy the situation longer term. So I would, my suggestion was to hold off on this easement. Let me see what happens there.
Okay, um, and I'll just explain a little bit about this, um, this project will not be adjusted for the light. Um, this project will just solely be for the mill and overlay, uh, the designs are finalized. Um, so it's just going to be for the mill and overlay, and in the curb ramps will not, uh, set any signage at this point. at this point, um. So if if you're thinking there'll be some kind of uh, leverage or something like that, uh, by by not um, accepting these agreements, uh, at this point, what has been allocated by federal highway is allocated to this project. This project will not have anything different added to it. So the signage will be more than likely a completely different project, uh, and won't cross over with these curb ramps. So does that, does that help you out?
Yeah, yes, I understand what you're saying.
I have the paperwork, but yeah, you're. So we got this exact same paperwork for our property, just to have for them to have that easement with that curb ramping. So it's not, there's no language in it that has anything to do with the traffic. Like, cause we talked about the same thing at home, um, but there isn't anything. It's strictly for this project of these curb ramps for the And so every curb ramp all the way up and down Highway One on both sides is affected. And you're seeking this permission from every single landlord, regardless of their proximity to any traffic light.
Correct, we are, and there's, there's only a couple that actually do meet the criteria of the ADA at this point. Uh, but almost every curb ramp right on along Highway One is been affected by this project. So yes, we have been asking for all the owners for the exact same temporary construction easements.
Does that help ease your concern? I don't know that we're gonna get, this would gain us any leverage, cause I know I still have interest in some property to the north and got these exact same documents as well. Um, and the possibility that it's the project will be moved back was gives news to me to. Any further?
And I can certainly uh, talk to the project manager. Uh, I have already talked to him about some concerns that are, you know, that your individuals have had have brought to my attention. Um, so I always do move that forward along to the DOT, so I have no problem with also, you know, mentioning that this is something that has been mentioned quite often to me during my contacts with all these landowners. I can certainly do that.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor, right? Okay, any further discussion? And Sheila is not with us either in person or online. Uh, hearing no further discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. A motion passes and let the record show that uh, Court Member Nagel is not present this time. Alright, thank you, Ms. Dooley, for your presentation.
Thank you, and you guys have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Alright, uh, the next item on the agenda is a consideration of a staff resignation. And your package is a letter from this Ms. Donaldson. Who became Mrs. Deppleton, who joined us in when? She said she's been here almost thirty years. I'll read for for prosperity, I guess, uh, December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. Dear Mrs. Sell, please accept my resignation as the Spanish teacher, EL coordinator, and technology integrationist at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Oak's Public Schools has been my home away from home for almost thirty years. I am so very thankful for my time here. I will miss the student staff and camaraderie. It has been a great place to grow and foster a love of lifelong learning. I will be up one hundred percent to all my duties for the remainder of the school year. Thank you for your support and all the opportunities I have been given here. Sincerely, Leslie Deppleton. Is there a motion to accept Mrs. Deppleton's resignation at the end of the school year? I know nobody wants to make sure. Thor moves to accept the resignation of Mrs. Deppleton. I'm pretty sure I've heard him say with deepest regrets and appreciation. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Time back seconds.
Time back seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes, and again, Nagel is not present. Moving on, uh, negotiating unit recognition. We need to act on this. Uh, on January fifth, the Oak's Education Association, or at least that's when it's stated, I don't know when it was presented. Has filed, uh, the appropriate documentation to become recognized as the negotiating unit. Uh, signed by, um, many numbers and by the Association President Cornishall. It is our duty now to accept this, and I believe to meet with them within thirty-eight, thirty-five. Okay, is there a motion then to, is there words here somewhere?
I didn't.
Recognize the Oak's Education Association as the uh, exclusive representative of all teachers employed by the.
So move time back.
Time back moves to, uh, approve or recognize the OEA as the negotiating body. Is there a second? Thor, second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes, uh, again with Nagel absent. And the negotiating team is Sheila Nagel and myself, so we will Mrs. Sell's guidance and systems, we will do whatever we need to do next. Alright, uh, business manager evaluation. Um, I did send to you late yesterday afternoon. Shannon self-evaluation and, um, update on goals. Um, I think as evidenced by her report and completion, continued completion and progress on financial reports, um, you can see she's been making progress. Uh, we're not required to adopt or approve anything. I wanted to share her thoughts with you, and I will visit with her about it uh, further. And we wanted to do a more thorough complete evaluation in the summer. Were there any questions or comments related to the documents that I shared with you or Shannon's work? Hearing none, no action is required, but again, appreciation and thanks to Shannon for continued progress and keep it up. Um, next, we wanted to add some discussion about House Bill twelve fifty-one, um, which is a bill that is possibly going to be, likely going to be heard, I understand, next week by the House Education Committee. Getting a lot of attention, and it is, um, an effort to, um, require that any school district with fewer than four hundred and seventy-five students be uh, required to partner with other smaller school districts to hire a superintendent together. And also to limit the the compensation for superintendents. Only in those size districts? And we have, you shared that bill with us. I came, um, I I assume that the rest of you are also getting this correspondence from the School Board Association. Yesterday afternoon, uh, the talking points came out and Phil, um, Director Basley's uh, request is that there be at least one letter from every school board and from a member of every school board in the state. By my calculation, um, the the compensation, okay, look at item three of the bill on the section one. Item three says the total compensation to a school district provides to the school district superintendent may not exceed one and one-half percent of the total state and local general fund revenue exceeded by the school board chair. And that total includes the compensation the superintendent receives for other duties performed within the district. Well, if I read this correctly and understand our budget correctly, we have about a million and a half dollar general fund local tax levy, and about four million from the states. From the states, so a total of five and a half million. And when I did the math at home, I came up with ninety-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, you have to fill out a sheet for state for that, and that's about what it would be.
Okay, so I, and as I was trading out some files yesterday, I came across, um, when we were, we were undergoing the trans, uh, the superintendent um, transition last summer and working on what compensation we should propose. Um, you know, we hired, uh, our superintendent for twenty-one, twenty-two at a salary of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that doesn't even include health insurance benefits, um, uh, retirement, anything, anything else. Um, you recall that then Mr. Getz also took on girls' basketball coaching, so he was compensated for that. Had we offered ninety-four thousand, you think we wouldn't have any applicants? I don't. Um, likewise, Mrs. Sell, as a principal, was earning a salary of, I had ninety-six thousand dollars plus, uh, retirement of about twenty thousand and insurance of around uh, twenty thousand plus. I don't know why she would have taken this job at a that big of a pay cut, so um, I'm I'm struggling to, um, see that we would be helped further. I would uh, and it it's been suggested that an official opposition of this bill might be helpful, uh, and an opposition by the board, as well as individual board members. I'm not pushing it, but I I would support this for taking an official position against the bill, but I welcome a a motion and second, so we can.
Now, is this for? Where are we at? I mean, we're right at the.
Yeah, we're four eighty-three, I think, about forty-four, something like that, I agree, it's going pretty. No, no, yes, without.
Now, is the compensation limits on all superintendents or just?
For all, everybody.
Well, but what's, what's there around here? Our numbers and.
You know, it would be a little bit higher.
Well, but I looked at, six-two or six-three is what? Is that our total budget? Or if, but we just look at our gen, uh, this is general fund. So I I looked at our general fund tax levy with, I thought about a million and a half. And our general fund dollars from the state. I had four million. I went back and looked at, I think, the budget that we filed with the.
It's not gonna change.
And so when I look at, oh, let's look at Mrs. Sell, for example, last summer, when she accepted this position, if she was a person who was mobile and, you know, she was, she would be willing to move to Fargo or Bismarck. Well, my goodness, you know, she could have there's no limit on what they could pay a principal in Fargo or Bismarck or Jameson. Why would she have taken this job if she was going to move to Fargo to state? Yeah, and likewise, she would have been supervising principals and other staff here that made more than she does. What's, what's kind of scary about this is that these are very well-respected and experienced legislators who are supporting this and promoting this, sponsored this, and I'm I will write, I will personally write, um, testimony against this bill and again, I entertain a motion, and if nobody wants to take a position against it, then we'll just work individually. Even if it doesn't apply to us now, maybe if it becomes law, we could very well apply to us in future years.
I would move to make an official um, opposition to this bill.
Okay, um, time but moves to take a position opposing House Bill twelve fifty-one. Is there a second? Dave, second. Any discussion? Do you have a comment, Shannon?
I was just gonna say that even with this sharing a superintendent, one superintendent can only be in one place if happens to be here and they're with another school, something's going on, they're not there. The responsibility is the land of somebody.
Cause what, I mean, the schools that do share, what kind of numbers do they have?
Well, I know of Steel. Steel and Linton right now, I believe, are sharing superintendent. So Steel is smaller, so is them, but not significant. I mean, Linton HMB is in our same football bracket, so I mean, numbers wise, they're somewhat comparable. That's just a, for instance.
Sorry, do they have an assistant superintendent? Well, and that, they, that just came about this school year, and it may have been because they couldn't hire anybody. Not because they didn't want to.
And so if they're hiring an assistant superintendent, how is there any savings? But you know, assuming it's not a principal taking on the assistant, I mean, now you've got the benefits, the TFMR and the salary to go along with it. I don't see where you would be any cost savings. Well, and nothing about this says that you can't do that. You know, if that's what your school chooses to do, this is just going to be forced upon those smaller schools, which.
And I see, I see nothing that addresses the fact that the bigger school districts, Fargo, Grand Forks, Bismarck, might not have one superintendent, but many assistant superintendents and principals and assistant principals in many, many buildings and publicity officers and activities directors and this you know, who is, who is looking at whether they're loaded in their administration. I I would say our, our, their smaller district superintendents are doing everything from driving around and calling around in the middle of the night to see if they should call up school to staying late at the activities and mopping up the lawn that that, um, I'm pretty sure Dr. Gandhi hasn't done that. Maybe he has.
One in our little schools, that's gonna fall on them. You know, they're. Right? And so, yeah, I'm there. And I, and I just think it's taking away local control from you guys. If you wanna decide that you wanna have a superintendent, pay them whatever you're gonna pay them, that should be up to you.
Or if you wanna decide to share. Nothing's stopping school districts from doing that now. So again, local control allows for it, so.
We, we are, we have been for many, for decades, sharing administrative staff via our arrangement with the Southeast Region Food Test Center. We're doing it. It's working well. We haven't felt the need. No board has felt the need to share us.
And we actually share in our special ed units, a director among five different schools, so you get to see what it's like to have to share a director.
Alright, any other discussion? Any other discussion? I would, um, I would, um. I will draft a letter for myself, if you would, Anna, would you draft a letter on behalf of the board, um, and. I will sign it, but I will probably also draft something. As an individual and I would invite the rest of you to choose as well. Um, it was anticipated that this bill may be heard next Monday or Wednesday afternoons. Um, I'm actually gonna be in Bismarck Monday for my state board meeting, but I'm probably not gonna have time to go. To such a hearing, um. But I, we, we can submit, um, written testimony. I wouldn't also, I also wouldn't relish driving back through Bismarck on Wednesday necessarily, but I wouldn't mind testifying. As can we, can we testify remotely, I wonder?
Well, okay, Drew Courtney and I were talking about that because of Thursday is the testimony for the stoplight, but, um, I. Don't know if I'll be able to get out there because of another thing that I have to do in the morning, but, um. Drew thinks that we can do it and she, he said for a while they weren't letting you testify, but he thinks it's back again, like you testified by, um, remote.
But we'll touch on that other bill, uh, really good at the order here, the internal return, that's true. Okay, any other discussion on twelve fifty-one? On, on our pending motion to oppose officially oppose Bill, uh, Bill twelve fifty-one.
Maybe just some direction on the letter, um, what the points are, a local control, thinking my local, is that your biggest difference?
Hey, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to have a roll call.
A.
Yes. Thorpe.
Yes.
Time back.
Yes.
Uh, Nagel. Is absent and Neil. Uh, yes, motion passes for to zero with Nagel absent and not voting. Um, items for future agenda, we can cross up item eight, well, we will have the bids themselves, I guess, we think budget. Uh, the audits, uh, if that's ready, we can, um, come for February.
That'll be in February, it's gonna be at the center, right?
For the good of the order, just, um, I think you probably all had some correspondence on that House Bill twelve forty-six. Um, I did go in yesterday and submit a personal letter as an individual, you, um, the. The board authorized you to contact, uh, DOT back in what, December, and that letter. Now appears online, uh, as testimony against that, uh, or in favor of that House Bill twelve forty-six. I, mine, I submitted mine yesterday afternoon and I received, yeah, I received acknowledgement that it was. It was received, but it said it will be reviewed. I, I suppose, just to make sure somebody hasn't put something vulgar, but, uh, you can.
I think it's on there, Sonia, I saw it this morning, I believe, but I, I think it was up to like thirty-two.
Oh, okay, good.
I submitted one last night, but I don't see mine. And did you submit it directly? To Green, like, oh. Forwards to.
I personally wrote a letter on my letterhead and I, there was a place you could upload a document. It said you could upload up to five documents and I just, I wrote a letter with my letterhead and, um. Attached my digital signature, but most of them just appear to be. Forwarded through Representative Green. And there are what now, thirty-two? Oh, no, uh, Matt O'Brien is now, uh, a new one. So. Um, continue to, um, people to submit, um, and make, I think, make. Graphic points, one of the things I wanted to emphasize was I sometimes drive a truck through there, a semi truck. And I can see that traffic light from many blocks to the north and many blocks to the south. I can see that. Actually, I can see the, the, the time, the countdown timer. Of the cop block and. That's much better than just stopping.
That's the comment I made in mind was that I can, you know, I live on the highway and I can see it from a distance and I see the vehicles coming into town. At higher rate of speed and it catches their attention and hits them just slow down.
And also I noticed that, you know, right here around the school, obviously, our. Youngest and least experienced drivers are pretty actively driving around the school and. A traffic light is a better control than stop sign. Making specific and, um. Painting, painting a picture, I think is good.
Uh, I didn't ask the Vision Zero kids to take pictures and write a letter and then also student also that was.
Oh, good idea, very good, one thing. This is today, oh.
Thursday.
For two fifty, but it'll come up at any time.
That's what Drew said, so he said you could drive out there, have your meeting and then miss it totally. So you basically have to sit there all day.
Well, not all day because the, the committee needs at a specific, from a specific time to a specific time, but, um. Okay, so, and for the members of the public who might be listening or hear this, please, uh. Submit something either directly to the legislature, through your legislator in support of House Bill twelve forty-six. Which will help us retain our stoplight in town or traffic light. Um, we were told yesterday, or I was told yesterday. That the DOT opposes the bill. So it is important for us to, um. Make our decisions now. Okay, with that, uh, as Hannah mentioned, our next regular meeting, our February meeting. We try to hold up the career test center in honor of, of C T E month and we'll have. Hopefully a brief presentation on our audit. As well as a presentation from, um, Mr. Spellerberg and, um, Mr. Brockman. On, um, our relationship with the.
Next Friday, just to make sure.
Yeah, we changed that because.
Yeah, um, the convening.
Oh, okay, yeah, good point, thanks.
And Spelly, that, that's okay, they're able to come.
Okay. All right, very good, any, and then Tuesday, March fourteenth, uh, is our March meeting. And that we will need to complete our spring. Uh, superintendent evaluation. Monica, you're also away at that time.
Yes, I will, yep, I'll be in Europe.
And you will not be able to join us, do you think, at all?
I don't believe so with the time change, I don't think that it's feasible.
Okay. And I don't, we can't hold it much later and I don't think we can. I don't know that, I think we'll just have to struggle through without. Means the rest of you are gonna have to step up and make some motion. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight forty-four AM.